Okay, welcome. I'm Tim Skygren, Chairman of the Shastberry Select Board, and I am calling this meeting of the Shastberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, November 17th, November 6th, 2017. First item up every meeting, does anyone on the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
Ron.
No. Approval of minutes. We have a couple of minutes that were circulated. Minutes from October 2nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from October 2nd as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any additions or corrections?
I didn't find anything.
I had a couple. I found how to spell Bowdoin.
Yep.
Put that in there. One item of parliamentary procedure interest, Robert's Rules of Order correction. If you table something, you have to pass a motion to bring it back up again. If you postpone something, you just reschedule it. So this Cole-Hall improvements agenda item was postponed. It'll come up again when David puts it on the agenda again.
Good.
And then when we were talking about the police coverage, I wanted to put in a sentence here that referenced the fact that in our meeting before this, we talked about this new Senate bill that said we're going to all have to pay for primary police coverage. When Art and I went to that meeting, we found out that that was a little bit hysterical announcement, that that's not the case, that this bill has been around for a long time, that they were just routinely polling citizens about police coverage. There's not an immediate plan to do anything about that, so I wanted to add the sentence. The previous reference Senate bill requiring primary police coverage has actually been on the Senate docket for several years. There is no immediate effort to require towns to change current policing practices. Any other corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes for October 2nd as amended, say aye.
Aye.
So those minutes are approved 4-0-0.
You'll send me a copy of those?
I will. And then special meeting on October 30th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art?
Don't think Ken. Can Ken?
I wasn't there, so.
Can he second that?
Oh, okay. And Joe wasn't there either, so we're going to have to wait on those.
Okay.
So we've got to wait until Art, Tony, and I are there. Okay. Warrants. I have payroll warrant number nine in the amount of $18,791.19.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So payroll warrant number nine in the amount of $18,791.19 is approved 4-0-0. Okay, I also have check warrant number 14 in the amount of $62,369.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Items over $1,000 on this one are $9,800 to Bowdoin Paving. That would be the aprons that we did.
Yes.
$2,300 to Bennington County Regional Commission. $2,700 to Bennington County Sheriff. $1,900 to Jerry Grasp Maintenance. No. Mark Honorado Excavate.
That was meant to go up on Chatsworth Hall. Part of the construction project.
Okay, right, right. $9,100 to Sullivan &amp; Powers for audit. $2,700 to Sycamore Landscaping for cemetery mowing. $31,000 to William E. Daley, which would no doubt be the gravel up on Shastberry.
That's pretty much all of what that was.
Yeah. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So check warrant number 14 in the amount of $62,369 is approved 4-0-0. So are there any announcements? I would just remind everyone that there is a vote tomorrow at the firehouse, 7:07, on the Act 46 school board consolidation. Very important. I hope everyone educates themselves on that and votes tomorrow. Any public comments? Ron?
I'd like to thank the Select Board for getting police crossing over here last week for Halloween.
Good.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Any other public comments?
I won't make a public comment because I'm not public, but next year for Halloween, we are going to have to hire more people. We almost had no one for Halloween this year, as apparently one of the fire police was injured, and they decided they weren't going to come. I only found out because I decided to go over and see if my sheriff had arrived and discovered there was no one on any of the streets. So Ron, who I saw going down the road crew tree, people with flag experience, Ron agreed to come out and do one of the corners for us. But we can't have the possibility that people aren't going to be there. So we're going to have to tighten it up a lot next year and possibly hire someone else to be on the corners, because the town is essentially inviting all these people in here as a tradition, and we have to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Because I think if I had turned right instead of going straight, we would have gotten phone calls around 7:00, 7:30 about why are the people driving up and down the street with all these kids?
Wow, okay.
Next year, we're going to handle this completely differently. It's going to be handled as a town event.
Good.
And we won't have this anymore. And the sheriff was there, you know. Going to have a word with the sheriff about it. And the troopers were there too, as usual, as they always are.
The troopers showed up even though we didn't ask them to?
Yeah, they do every year. It's never a problem having the trooper guard just parked on the corner. It gets people's attention.
Well, I've always seen the troopers there, and I just assumed that we had called them in, but they...
The first year I was here, I called them. The second year, I called them, and they were kind of like, you know, we come every year.
Stop calling, we'll be there.
And they do. They're there every year as long as they can maintain a presence in the area, they do. But we have to guard against what happens when they get called to some other town on a serious event, and they have to be somewhere else. We still have essentially invited a thousand or more children into the town, so we'll have to organize a little differently from that one.
Good, thank you. And thank you, Ron, for helping us out. Fred Kidding?
Was there going to be any other talk about Act 46, or just what you mentioned, that's it? There's nothing on the agenda?
There's nothing more on the agenda about it, but we welcome you to make any comments you'd like to.
All right, well, I can do that. This thing with Act 46, you know, it's actually, you know, Act 46 is about getting rid of staff in closing buildings. You do understand that, right?
No. That is not what Act 46 is.
That's what exactly Act 46 is, okay? And, you know, these monies that the state's going to give you, back our own money to make people vote for this thing, all we're going to do is come around, because I've been there for 30 years, and I know what's going to happen. They're going to offer you this money, then they're going to come around with an unfunded mandate, because now we're talking about autistic kids coming in with a special ed. Now, they've done this before with the pre-K. We set our budgets last time for 100,000, 200,000, whatever the number was, and then they pulled the money, so we didn't have the money. So if everybody thinks we're getting to deal with this Act 46, they're mistaken. You know, state legislators and the state people, whoever's appointed in those positions, haven't done their job. They knew that there was a deficit back years ago, that was 24 million. Al says it's 54 million. Well, it's actually 80 million. Now, I don't know what you, who you think this money's going to come from, it's coming from us. I did check the numbers for people that live in the state of Vermont, it's 624,000. In 20 years, we've lost almost 50,000 people. I don't know what percentage of that are students. And she's right when we're saying we're going to lose maybe another thousand students. I don't know if that's in the AMAU district or the whole state. I don't know. Can't seem to get the numbers on this stuff. And furthermore, the thing, now, I've worked tirelessly to save this district millions of dollars, and people know that. And one is in the school addition, you know, we did it for 350. This other thing is the ventilation system. Now, the ventilation system started at almost $800,000. And of course, I screamed and howled and jumped up and down about that, and it's like, well, it's time for another bond. No. You don't do business, you surely don't do that stuff at your home. I wouldn't want to do it to the taxpayers of Shastberry. You know, the other thing that gets me is, yeah, this one's super bored. Well, you know, I hope you people are going to like this, build, help build the new Molly Stark building when it comes. Or, you know, we already know how to say, well, we're 85% consolidated in Shastberry now. The only thing you're going to do, you're going to be giving your school up, you're going to be given, I can't believe you want to do this, but I'm hoping, as you say, I hope people educate themselves and vote tomorrow. I won't say yes or no to vote, but I have to tell you, we're going to be, we're like little lambs being led to the slaughter. And I'm hoping I can convince people, maybe they'll, maybe they'll get it anyway, the only bad thing about Shastberry is voter apathy. A lot of people don't vote anymore, because they're disinterested, and when I looked at some people, you know, went for the petition. I said, I don't, I don't pay attention to that stuff. That raises red flags there, so I mean, hopefully, you know, the incentives are really not that much. The first year doesn't do anything for Shastberry. I'm hoping maybe in the near future, you look into District 1, because that's where we should be. Shastberry, I've said before, Shastberry needs to worry about Shastberry and not worry about every other single district, because I have to tell you, we got, I know it's the new cemetery in North Bennington, the Grandview Cemetery, and that was given to us for what reason? I don't know.
Why was the Grandview Cemetery given to us?
Yeah, given to us, or it was all of ours? I mean, I'm just asking the question.
Oh, yeah, because the Grandview Cemetery Association of People in North Bennington, who used to run it, decided they couldn't do that anymore, and when that happens, it defaults to the town where the land is, and the land is in Shastberry.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm telling you, you ought to get it after District 1, because now we've got another cemetery we have to take care of, correct? I mean, I don't know how much money that is. Money is money, but that's okay. I guess I've had my say. People think twice about Act 46. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for your opinions, and I like seeing your passion. I think a lot of people don't realize how important this vote is. I do disagree with your basic position. I am for Act 46. And I do disagree with your characterization that Act 46 is intended, that Act 46 closes schools. It doesn't close schools. It consolidates school boards, so there will be fewer boards. Now, you and I might disagree about what that might do in the future, but you would agree that there's no school closings per se in Act 46.
Only when it gets to probably the fourth or fifth year, and it is going to come.
Right, right.
And I would not want to see Shastberry school closed, but it could happen. You know, they've had the chances before over the years to share students in the Bennington district, so the only way you're going to save millions of dollars is you share your students between schools, so you don't have to build buildings. That's one way of doing it, and that was refused years ago. So, anyway.
Well, and the other thing that I would point out is that the vote tomorrow is not for or against Act 46. You would agree with that, right? Act 46 is the law of the land.
Well, that's why they give you on this sheet right here that I'm holding, you don't have to vote for it, okay? What you do is you put in a petition or an order to the state, and by the end of December, and they'll probably come down and look at it, and you probably can stay just the way you are. It's a lot of ifs.
It's a lot of ifs, and we're all talking ifs, and I happen to feel that the state is not going to allow us to stay the way they are, because people have asked that question of the state on, of the state Board of Education, and the indications we've gotten is that they wouldn't allow us to do that, which has prompted us to try and define our own rules. Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Any other public comments? All right, we will go on to treasure report. Melanie Dexter, welcome. No, I didn't get your treasures report. I'll do that right now.
You do have it, though?
Yeah, it went in very late, but this I thought.
Was it email or Dropbox?
It should be in the Dropbox. It's not in there. It's not there in Dropbox.
Yeah, I was looking for it. Let me just open that up.
It's still not in there.
It's not there.
I was having trouble getting this in. This is my second try getting in there. I think it's in the.
The reserve funds are there, the fourth from the bottom.
Oh, yeah, they're there.
Not that that's terribly helpful, but the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You didn't put treasures report in the title. We're simple people here.
I don't have anything to say about this. I'm completely, completely burnt out from collecting taxes. It was, it's been really, really, really busy. I would plead with people to sign their checks. There's been a flurry of unsigned checks, and what happens is I have to track you down, because, you know, I don't want it to go delinquent, just because the bank won't accept the check if it's not signed, so please sign the checks, be kind to me. There've been really a bunch of them today. The other thing is I'm going to be open tomorrow, even though the clerk is going to be doing the elections, I'll be there, not, not the entire time the voting's going on, but I'll be there a chunk of time, so people can stop by and pay their taxes after voting, if they want to be able to do that. The other thing is that I should have mentioned this before. I have said that postmark of the 10th is on time. The problem is the post office has closed the 10th, so it actually needs to be postmarked the night. The holiday is the.
Oh, Veterans Day?
Is being celebrated. Well, the 11th is Saturday, but the post office is recognizing it on the 10th, so the post office is closed.
Oh, okay, so wow.
So if you drop off your check expecting it to get stamped on time, if you mail it on the 10th, it actually will not get postmarked until Saturday, so just be aware of that, that it should be in the mail by.
So we're losing a day?
Yeah. And I'm going to be working, I think, 9 to 5, both Thursday and Friday, so if you can, if you're within the sound of my voice and you can come in, it's probably better than putting it in the mail. It is better than putting it on the mail, in the mail on Friday. If, I'm going to leave at 5:00. The mailbox is still outside. I will check it on my way out. I know when things are late, and I am obligated to turn them over to MERC if they are, so just be aware of that, that I'm going to check it at 5:00 o'clock, and if you come by at 6:00, it's, I'm going to know that it's not on time. So that's about taxes. We can go through this real quick, but I don't have anything to say about any of this.
Okay.
It's all taxes all the time.
How much of the taxes have you collected today?
It's about 56% as of the end of today.
So a few more checks coming in this week?
Oh, yeah, a few more. I thought today's in the mail was like that, and I've already done the big escrow check, so these are all individuals that are still coming, that's why, I look the way I do. So it'll be frantically busy for the rest of the week. I work 10 to 1, except for the last two days, I will be there right, right until 5:00. There's the budget you can see, pretty similar to last year. As usual, you're seeing that our spending is lagging behind. That's because of all that prepaid stuff that was in the expenses last year, right, Dave?
Yeah, the expenditures, especially in this one, by this time last year, we had already done a big project, which would have upped this.
Right.
The fact that we didn't get the East Road grant is just making this, but it's pretty much right where it should be.
Yeah, there's, there's, nothing jumps out, and it's going to be evened out more by November, so this is just the act total report you're seeing here.
Okay.
I don't know, any questions about any of this?
Looks good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, road foreman report.
All right, well, the road foreman isn't here, so the basic report will be that we began stoppiling the salt, made the winter sand pile that you see out back here. Crews been working on the trucks. We had a lot of wind damage, as everyone knows, and a lot of trees down, which took up a good part of last week. We were having a crew meeting Wednesday morning to go over what needs to be done. There's a few things on the roads that need to be done. There's still that hump on the culvert on White Creek that we need to heat up and chip off and then patch it.
Some, somebody said, call Bennington, they have a grinder that would grind that down. Is that true?
Yeah, we've actually talked to Lyle, too, and he.
Lyle's the one that told me.
Oh, okay, yeah, then that's where we'll go, because you can do it, we're going to do it. It's, actually seems even bigger to me.
It's gotten worse.
Yeah, so it's going to be gone. We have the patching to do. Well, the system foreman, so you have anything you want to add, anyone?
No, I'm doing great. I'm doing perfect.
Ron's my optimist. But yeah, basically, the trucks, everyone's working on the trucks to get them ready. I mean, we had to take a little bit of a outside work break to make sure with possible snow even later this week, we need to make sure that everything's up and running. We did have a slight injury today, so we're going to be out of person for a couple of days.
Who got hurt?
Tim. A little injury, which we can discuss in executive. And that's honestly about it. I'm sorry, I don't have more.
How's the project looking at Shastberry Hall?
It's done.
That is, okay.
Yeah, the project in Shastberry Hall is done. Tremblor Hill, whether we're able to do that, still is a thing we're going to discuss Wednesday morning. There's a whole little laundry list of things we need to clean up before the winter, besides the normal trimming back of the brush and the trees, which we're going to do. We're going to discuss how we want to do that next year, too. The stumps on those stumps on Holy Smoke Road, we need to get some of them out soon.
We're going to do that this.
Yeah, I would hope to dig them out fairly quickly, fairly soon. I mean, this keeps getting kicked down the list somehow, and I know one gentleman has a problem with his trailer trying to get in and out. I think it's time we remove the stump from there. Then there's some other trimming that needs to be done, and then the normal winter maintenance that'll continue to go on. That's about it. Not really totally prepared to do a report tonight.
Yeah.
Were we able to satisfy Mr. Corey with his little curbing or bidding?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the apron. We did quite a number of aprons on East, Lower East Road. We did the, just on Perrin Road, just in from the railroad tracks, to make it easier for plowing. We put a T at the end of Perrin Road. What is that, Lake?
Elm Street.
Elm Street, did one there.
Corey Drive.
Yeah, Corey Drive. Just trying to smooth out some of the aprons we had, because we had money that normally would have gone to match the state grant out of our meager paving fund, so we decided to put it towards some quick fixes for some things. The Perrin Acres, putting the T on will hopefully eliminate the potholes you get from people breaking and accelerating, coming in and out of there, you know. It's actually something that I was thinking about, your question about Rollin and Horton Hill. Yeah, well, you know, as people come down, they're slowing down, and then they're accelerating, they start turning, and they stop, and they accelerate coming out, so when you're turning, you know, that's where you always make the potholes.
Sorry, what are you talking about?
This is at Perrin Acres and, yeah, it's Perrin.
Lake Drive.
Lake Drive, thank you.
I put the sign up today, so I know.
Yeah, but then I was thinking today, or last week, your question of Rollin and Horton Hill, you know, a little investigation there, maybe the same kind of thing, well, no, because no one works, so it's going to be more difficult, so that's not going to work. I don't want to take that off the table.
Yeah, I still contend that's, that we need, that it's a water problem there.
Yeah, I think we'll investigate that more in the spring. It hasn't potted up since all the rain we've had recently.
Not as bad, but until it rained, it was perfect. There were no potholes there, and it started raining, and they're.
Yeah, every road, every road we've got, got potholes when it started raining. It's not just that one section.
Not all of them. That new section of Shastberry Hall is beautiful.
The Georgia roads, we've got, I've got potholes from the rain we've got.
Yeah, but the places where we've recently added fabric and, how many inches of gravel did we add in Shastberry Hall?
18.
18. Yeah, it's a, it's a highway out there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, there's not, there's not a dimple in that road from the rain. It looks beautiful.
That's, Ron, you can think about anything?
Nah, just brush.
Yeah. Which, yeah, we're going to have a discussion on that Wednesday morning, too.
How does it look?
Stumps and brush, I would say.
Yeah.
Disappointing.
How does it look for the search for the truck? Have we found anything?
Yeah, the pickup truck?
Yeah.
Well, that got pushed all the way back from when we went from six guys to four guys to three guys, now that we have the staff up again. We had our eyes on one down at our car bone, but I went down last week and it's gone, so we're going to wind up putting the ad out for it and taking bins. But a utility pickup truck that can plow and serve a lot of needs around here, because we still don't have that right-sized truck for doing a lot of little tasks.
Have you ever been down to Troy, New York, on the right-hand side, there's like the guy that sells bucket trucks and all?
Yeah, yeah, Midstate?
Is that the name of it?
Yeah, you know, you have to be careful. I've actually asked Dave and Steve to go down there and look at different things. I actually saw an interesting thing, one, talk about Wednesday morning, an old Grafton fire truck that is now in a yard further down from there for sale at somebody's auto body shop, that they have taken the whole fire truck end off and put a platform on it. I was looking at that, because we need to replace the chloride truck. Hey, you got to be inventive, because you don't want to spend a lot of money on a truck that's going to rot away with salt, so, you know. You know, you look for what's out there, because basically all we want is a frame to build a platform on, to put the same tank on the top. And then we're going to subject it to nonstop corrosion from the calcium chloride we put in it, so you don't want to spend a lot of money on the truck, you know. If you get a good price and you get several years out of it, like we've gotten out of this thing, it's a win. You know, you don't put that thing on a new truck.
Next, you're going to be telling me you found an old hearse that don't fit on.
Things you can do with that. The cheaper the better. That's my theory.
Any more on the roads? Thank you. Okay, BCCD grant for the mulcher.
Yeah, I just wanted to go down and kind of bring us up to date, and part, because part of this is the capital projects for next year, too, and finishing this year, again, because we ran us low on manpower. Someone's over this summer, we got behind on a few things. The first one, the BCCD grant for the mulcher. I thank Shelley Styles for, again, helping us with finding the paperwork and advocating for us with the state. We were awarded the grant to purchase the mulcher. Waiting for the paperwork to come through. It's a $5,000 mulcher that's going to cost us about $500, so that'll be really good. This all goes. This all goes with municipal roads.
Grant and aid.
No, no, it's the municipal road permit that we all have to follow starting by 2020.
Water, Clean Water.
Yeah, the Clean Water Act. And each town will get its general permit. It's Municipal Road General Permit is what it's called. And we need to really be doing a tremendous amount of ditching, culverts, mulching to the state standards, blanket mulching. So having this means, we've done a lot of mulching, it's keeping up. Like, the guys were hand mulching, which takes forever. We rented from, was that ground we rented that from? The mulcher twice, and boy, you can cover a lot of ground real quick with one of these. So this is a great grant considering what we need to be looking at in the future. The next one is, is the Stormwater Master Plan Grant.
Do you need action for us on this?
No, no, this is just trying to bring the board up. Some of this stuff has been ongoing for so long, I'm just gonna remind everyone where we are with things. This is a new one, the Stormwater Master Plan Grant. We were just awarded last week. This'll be done by BCRC for us, again, with the Municipal Road General Permit. This will provide us with an inventory of all our culverts, where we have to have any connections to meet the state standards. This'll be a long way to getting us ready to apply for more grants and to plan out where we're gonna go.
This was the one where our share could be as little as just supplying a pickup and a driver?
This one, this one, yeah, will be virtually nothing for us. Jim will be doing most of this through BCRC and providing us with the details. The next one is, another one along the same way, Municipal Grant and Aid. This is slated, again, we went out with Jim from BCRC. We picked Tinkham Road for this project. It's about $15,000, $20,000, where we'll be doing ditching and grading and basically making the water run further away from the roads, from top to bottom, and bringing the stretcher road there up to the future state standards as they have it. You might remember, we received a Category B grant for doing roadwork on the upper end. This is above Myers Camp on Shasbury Hollow, starting from there going to the complete end. This, again, is all building, ditches, drainage, and keeping the water out of, and the giant, yes, Ron, the giant culvert, yes, the giant culvert too, that we have to put it up there. But that has been planned out. We engineered that a couple of years ago, and we will be doing that in the spring along with Tinkham Road. That was above mandatory to be finished in the spring, so that'll be part of our construction in the spring.
This'll be our guys doing this one?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a quick question on the road construction. That was a $70,000 project in Shasbury Hollow. Were we able to keep under budget with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, way under budget. Actually, it's down to like, I think, around a $45,000 project.
Really?
There was a little miscalculation there in the.
About a 50% reduction.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Get somebody in Atticus or something to.
So that $70,000 bill from Daley's was not all the Shasbury Hollow?
No, it was $30,000, that was all.
That's the gravel, right?
Yeah, gravel, yeah, yeah. And then there's the truck rentals and other stuff on there.
Thirty thousand, yes, I'm sorry.
So the total project is probably around 40,000, I would think at this stage. Which is good, because that will bring us back to, just leaving this for the second. I was speaking with the state engineers, and they are gonna come up and do the work on Myers Road, make a proposal to us on how we should fix that. And that $30,000 now can be rolled right over to fixing Myers Road. That'll be in the spring, we're obviously not gonna attempt that now. But the state will provide us, I think, generally anybody who's driven on that realizes we need some, let's just plan and do this correctly, similar to the things we just did on East Road, on the state's recommendation. Hopefully, we'll take the problem away completely, instead of going back every year and putting tons of gravel. Let's see, we have, let's see, we have, we're in the color. We also have yet another grant that's gonna be in inventory. I said culvert inventory before for Stormwater Master Plan, but that's just for ditching and the interconnection of the waterways. There's culvert inventory and road inventory, which is another grant, which, again, has to do with the Municipal Road General Permit, which will help at this very expensive project. You know, out of all of our roads, if the state has a map and shows, basically in colored ink, what roads are connected with waterways and are water runoff, and the entire town is covered. So we had a discussion at a meeting, you know, we have 70 miles of road, and like 60 of them are colored here. What are we, you know, how are we supposed to do this by 2020? And then they, we're gonna prioritize roads, but I think they understand that to do all this is gonna be a little bit expensive. And when you have a high-mile town like we have, we're gonna need some assistance with it.
When they say roads that are connected with waterways, I mean, I guess there's some distance from a waterway?
Yeah, and this runoff.
All the land is connected to a waterway.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I know, it's a very confusing thing. And when you look at our map, literally almost all the roads are colored purple. They're all connecting one way, or if the water drains off this way, it goes down here, it'll get into this gully, go over here.
Yeah, I mean, it all adds up in the rivers and streams, wouldn't we?
Yeah, which is one of the issues, why we have so much to do, and it's just gonna take time. The next one we have is, which is in progress, is another Category B, which will be almost exclusively for ditching and culverts, including rocks and rock dams for culvert, for ditches. The bedding, if you have steep slopes, you can't just, you can hydroseed them, or you can put the matting up. Matting is very expensive, but it's required. So that'll be a grant, hopefully I can get about $22,000 from the state for that. That's in works now. We're gonna submit that in a couple of weeks.
That's a state requirement?
Yeah. Yeah, part of the whole thing, the bigger picture is, you have to meet the state requirements, because we also get about $160,000 a year from the state anyway in state road aids. So you have to meet the standards, the state standards, to continue getting that money. And a lot of these projects now require us to have the people from the state come down and review the plan as we start. So, you know, they expect for now their money, especially that it be done according to their plan. So it's nice that we are getting money. This is about $70,000 here in grants, so that'll go a long way to keeping us afloat with this.
And we must meet all the requirements to get that state aid?
Yeah, the state aid has long been, you have to basically be up to the Better Back Roads Manual and the Orange Book. And I have a feeling that with the Municipal Road General Permit and all its requirements, which is the new thing, is the Safe Water Act and all that, that as they design things for us, they'll come and see that it was implemented correctly. So especially when they're giving us like, I think it's $15,000 for Tinkham Road, we have to have the person, the rep there with us, go over again what we're gonna do. I'd be very surprised if they didn't come back afterwards to make sure that, you know, the design and the final product were, you know, the same.
So they have a state, somebody from the state comes down and says?
Yeah, yeah. Most of these projects on these grants, before you start, you have to have a meeting with them, because they wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page here, and that they're gonna get, that this is gonna be implemented the way it was written. So as long as, as long as they're helping out, they can live with it. And so far, we're not doing too badly, getting that $70,000 in a year is not too bad, so.
Dave, you said something about, when you're doing excavations and it's a steep slope, that you have to use that matting? Would you not be further ahead, rather than to get that bail chopper, to get a hydroseater that you could use wood mulch? And you wouldn't have to do the, the fat and the matting?
Yeah, hydroseating would work in those areas where you had like a steep slope. I guess the bottom line is, no one was giving me a grant for a hydroseater. The mulch chopper was available, and it's only costing the town $500 for a $5,000 unit. The bank areas where we would have to put the matting in, I don't think we have all that many. I mean, I know in a couple of areas of the road right now we could use them, but I think the grant alone would cover the steepest parts.
Okay, because if you use, if you get a hydroseater that can do the wood mulch?
Yeah.
That's just like, you just spray it out, and it stays right there, and it goes out fast.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's better than, it's better than the matting. That stuff is a, it's a butt.
I'm not even sure wood mulch is, is one of the things. I know hydroseating is allowed, I'd have to get into the weeds a bit, but.
Well, see, the thing is, there's two different kinds of hydroseating.
Yeah.
There's a cellulose, which is paper, then they've got the wood mulch. But the wood mulch hydroseater can do both. So like, if you were going to, you just, you just wanna seed something and coat it, you could use the paper mulch. And then when you got an area that's really steep, use the wood mulch. And you're still seeding it.
Yeah, yeah. Well.
Well, it comes down to.
Justice and judgment, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing what we're doing because the state's paying us to do it, essentially.
Yeah, essentially, yes.
As long as you're paying us, that's good for me. Get more of it.
All right, that takes care of that part.
Okay.
We can go on to the town garage update.
All right.
Last, it was the 30th, I forwarded the instructions to bidders to everyone. Tim, you commented on the one part, we talked about that.
Yeah, the instructions to the bidders, when we talked with Goldstein, we were saying we wanted the ability to decide if we liked the people who bid. We didn't wanna be locked into a, you know, just having to take the lowest bid. We wanted to be able to check references, make sure they can do the job and that sort of thing. And they had, they, Goldstein had said, yeah, you can do that, but you probably wanna put specifications into the contract and say, we expect you to have this much experience in doing that. Otherwise, you're, you have the risk of seeing arbitrary if you just decide, I like this guy better even though he's got a higher bid. So they came up with bid instructions that include things like minimum years of experience in doing this and that type of job. I talked to Dave, at first I thought, are we getting into micromanaging by saying, you know, they've gotta have five years' experience? But Dave convinced me that we've gotta put something in there, and five years is probably, probably a good number.
Yeah.
Eight years for general contracting.
Yeah, the contracting business has been.
So I'm, I'm fine with it, it just. You say these instructions did go out, or they're public?
Oh, no, 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 this is for our review, because I know you had a question about the schedule.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
So now, currently, the bid schedule has, the bid documents would be made available January 5th.
January 5th?
Yes. And that works along very well. And I know when we had the meeting, Jeff was, Jeff Goldstone was, I do not have the minutes from that meeting yet, but I would love to be able to quote what he said, why that was a good idea. But it would be the bid documents are January 5th, the pre-bid conference is the 11th. The questions regarding the orphan assistance would have to be back by the 18th. The, you know, because we're asking, we're giving people the opportunity to provide an orphan assistance, we have to give them enough time. That would be back by the 25th. Interpretation's by February 14th, addendum is by February 21st. The bid proposals would be due on March 1st, and the bid award letter of intent would be able to go out March 15th. Then the start construction date is, you know, April 16th, no sooner. And substantial completion by December 31st of 2018. Which still keeps the whole thing in the timeframe we were originally talking about, from road approval last March, by the time we get through all this design phase and permits, and we're still working on one permit from the state. I should say, our engineers are working on one permit with the state. Because, you know, we submitted all the documents, and you always get back, you know, well, could you add this line? Can you change this? It's nothing substantial, it's just the way they said it's built. But I, overall, it's still the same timeframe we were talking about. It's just up to the board if they want, wanna approach them to try and move that up. I don't know if we said the bid documents are being made available December 1st, which would kinda be impressed right now, because we're still waiting on the state for a permit. Maybe waiting till January is best overall, it's the start of the year. You don't have people, you know, off in different directions. The end of the year is always a tough time to get people organized.
Yeah, they're not trying to write a proposal over Christmas. Any thoughts? I have no reason to quarrel with that schedule.
None.
Okay.
No, I didn't see anything else in here that, that caught my eye on any of this. Just things that we will be changing as we go along, as we get more information. I did have a discussion with the local contractors there, just to make clear that, you know, we'd all discussed this, and when general contractors put in their, take out their proposal packages, they will have to sign those out from Goldstone, and Goldstone will maintain a list that after this starts on January, I'm sorry, January 15th, when the bid documents are available, the, any contractor looking for those will have to sign out a package or have them delivered by Goldstone. Goldstone will maintain a list of those contractors, so any local, every local person who wants to be a sub can simply contact Goldstone, and they can make proposals to the general contractor. So it's just a way of us having one GC for our construction inspector to deal with. The subs, any local contractor can go to the GC and make any proposal, because there will be a month here, and they're all competing over the same thing, so.
Sorry, did you say the local contractors go to Goldstone, or they go to the list of GCs?
They can get the names from Goldstone who signed out bid packages, and then they can contact, they're not gonna go to Goldstone, they just go to the GC and say, hey, I'm interested in the plumbing work, I'm interested in this. And let them handle their business, however they handle it.
Okay.
But if that's, if the rest of it's okay with the board, then I'll just move that along to the, for them to finalize.
Yeah, sounds good.
Just bring up the insurance, we've gone over all the insurance, gone over that with Dave Noel, what we're going to put into the plans. It's all fairly standard for this. The builder's risk policy that we'll take out, we have to wait until we actually have the final bid, because you have to know an estimated labor percentage of it, but we will have builder's risk insurance too. There's four different bonds that are gonna be required for this process too, which are all standard and should not be.
Bonds required of the GC?
Of the GC, yes. Now, let's see. The contract legal review, we're just going back and forth, I gave them, Merrill reviewed it for us. I forwarded that down to Goldstone. We really had no conflicts in anything. Merrill suggested we include a few addendums, which we are tagging onto the contract, performance areas. I think everyone got a copy of those. The rest were fairly simple changes. Once we've all agreed to this, we'll print out one copy that, again, we'll just review, follow review. Once they act, because it's an AIA document, you have to wait till you're absolutely certain, and then you buy it once, because you do have to purchase, I don't know how this works down with them, but you can't like, after you go through the final thing and actually get, produce the document, you can't go back and start changing it again, because they'll want a new payment. So it's just a lot of minor little changes. All right, I said Merrill reviewed it, so I think we're in a pretty good step with that.
It's kinda set in stone once it's there.
Well, once it's there, yeah, that's, that's it, yeah. So you wanna be careful going through. Let's see, the transfer station. We talked about a few ways of doing the transfer station. The crew doing the majority of it, possibly putting it out on a short bid, just to get a feel of the market right now, what we could have the whole thing done for. I asked MSK to produce a bid document for the transfer station, and this is it. It's quite a big thing.
It's the shrubber.
It's the shrubber.
It's, it's, uh, so it's made me rethink...
Ken does that kind of work? Ken, can you review that document?
So what I'm thinking now is, uh, we're, we're going to explore, we're going to move forward with the trees, with the basic groundwork, with, uh, material. Uh, we will still, I think, might have as a bid option, you know, we talked about having it as an option, uh, on the main bid for the building, finished work over there, but I think we're going to start exploring this. I mean, this is a great document, and I know exactly why you do documents like this, but, uh, we can achieve a lot of this work ourselves. We can truck a lot of material a lot cheaper ourselves, especially, you know, if we're talking mostly, uh, off-season here, more or less. I mean, when we're not plowed, we can do things.
We can really significantly reduce the cost.
Well, that was the entire intent of us doing it ourselves. We, we have, right now, uh, just about a million 360,000, uh, left for the project. Now, that still leaves us a substantial amount for this, so, uh...
Can this work be done with frozen ground?
Can this work be done frozen ground? Well, it's...
Depends how frozen.
Yeah, I think what we're looking at is...
It's weak on gold.
Yeah, I know, but it won't be frozen ground.
Yeah, I think what we're looking at is the tree removal as rapidly as possible. And the trees will be removed down where the road is, back to the scrap pile now. Uh, that's going, you know, it's very close, the elevation is straight across. So we bring the trees down, so all the stumps are below that grade. Uh, we'd asked MSK for an opinion on what the problem would be in leaving a lot of stumps there, especially on the side next to the cap. I have, uh, concern with ripping stumps up alongside the cap. Uh, so if we just, we could even begin the process of building the lot, before the ground becomes totally frozen. Because whatever layer we get in and start compacting would be to our advantage. The cut going the other side is just an 8% grade down for a small section where the containers are going to be, and then it comes back up, so... The way we're going to need in the contractor probably is in building the swale and the two retention areas for the stormwater, which are pretty critical to the whole project because all our test wells are down there. So, uh, yeah, this kind of surprised me, a document like this.
So we're going to have to have a document like that if our guys move the material, get it close to the right level, and then have somebody come in and build those swales and fine-tune it with the laser, or have to go through that?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think, uh, because I have asked, uh, MSK, they're preparing a, uh, kind of like a, a contract administration thing, but it wouldn't be. It's, it's more like, uh, coming in just inspecting, doing the levels, making sure that the grade is where it needs to be. I think the final grade, we would, we would contract with a, with a local excavator, so with the experience to level the thing off, make it, uh, fit the actual design, just make sure everything's in the right place. But we're still talking about, uh, moving a tremendous amount of material in here. And, you know, we cut a lot of costs by hauling ourselves and hiring a couple of trucks ourselves. And we're just moving it from right here down the road, literally. And there might even be some local we can grab. But, uh, there's a lot on the table with this. It's not a big rush, it's not a huge project. It's a lot of material to move, but, uh, once we're committed to it, it's, it can be done, I think, in a reasonable amount of time.
We're talking about doing this before winter?
We're talking about starting it before winter. I wouldn't guarantee this could be done before winter. It needs to be done, when these guys get here, let's say they start the garage, uh, late April, I mean, we can be finishing up a bunch of this late April. Remember, part of the contract for the garage is demo of the transfer station and everything. So there's this little timing in here of getting these two parts done with that, with the least disruption to the services they have to provide. Uh, you know, because we have to have an operating transfer station before we got this, or we have to somewhere on the property locate a temporary station so people can still dispose of everything. While, all, all the while, not getting in the way of operations. So there's a little back and forth here in the schedule that, uh, we, we still need to work on some.
Do we need to start it this fall?
I think yes.
What I'm wondering is, can we, uh, can we have this happen under the direction of the GC that we hired and have him direct our guys to haul gravel and have it all happen in the spring?
They cannot really be involved in that part of the year. Because we're not going to have time to do that. Part of, part of the original concept was to get this going. This is the best time of year for them to do this. Uh, because we have enough manpower, uh, that projects can be going on, we can be doing, uh, brush cutting, we can be cutting trees, we can be working on trucks while one or two guys are down there doing this kind of work. And the most important, we've got to get rid of the trees. And now's the time to get rid of the trees.
Did we ever get an opinion on those trees? Can we rip them out or are we still waiting to hear that?
No, the, the trees are going, no matter what, the trees are going. The stumps, we haven't heard about, but...
I was just going to ask a question now, as far as removal of the trees, is there any way that we could get some local guys that cut trees, that sell firewood, that may have a possible interest in...
Uh, the, my feeling on that is, I need speed. We need these to be gone.
Well, then the other question is, is that, is there a liability there if they've got hurt?
Oh, a huge one, that's why I've, I've spoken to several, uh, local, uh, people in the business. Uh, one of them had, just simply had no interest and recommended somebody else. I have one, one group that's interested and, uh, uh, they have the equipment and the time and can move this stuff. See, it has to be, I can't like, save people for firewood. Well, first off, I can't have people out there cutting down trees left and right because there'd be a, and, and I can't have any fall towards the cap because if one hits the cap, it's going to puncture the cap, which is a whole nother issue. So, you know, we just need someone to come in, a professional, cut them down, take 90% of the material, the, the top parts or whatever, if you grant you, you can just put down the bottoms. But, you know, we need the whole...
Do it, do it right.
Yeah, yeah. Go, one thing about it, it's all pine, no hardwood there for firewood.
Oh, okay, so that's...
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's true too. That's what the, what are the guy called? Pennywood or something, I don't know. Some of them are called...
That'll fly your chimney up quick.
Yeah, yeah, so it's really, the, the, you know, because I had originally looked to like, maybe we could just barter them off if it had any value, but it really doesn't have much value.
That's why the gears were turning.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, it's, it's of a volume where I can just get a couple of, uh, uh, proposals, which, which I, well, I've approached three people, two of whom really didn't have interest and, uh, one of them recommended the other one. Uh, so, uh, you know, I think we need to move forward, get the trees down, then we can start working on some of the rough moving material around to get the project started, and then we can go on from there.
Okay.
We don't want to forget that in that gray, gray garage, there's two pretty good generators, diesel generators on, on army wagons.
Yeah, uh, we're going to have to come up with some way of...
Shouldn't be scrapped.
Bid, bidding them out. People have approached me about the buildings, but again, you get into all this liability issue, and people are going to have to have million-dollar insurance policies to do this, to cover us by our own standards and what our, what our main insurance carrier would want. Uh, so, you know, there's a lot involved here. I mean, even with the trees, uh, I have to have a full insurance, naming the town as a second insurer because, uh, you know, if something happens, and things happen, and the, and, you know, you don't want to wind up there. So, uh, yeah, all right, there's the two generators near, the rest of it's kind of junk.
It is.
But, yeah, they have to go.
We don't know how good the generators are either, right? They haven't tried to start those in decades, have they?
The, the diesel ones, I think, are okay. Uh, the, the older gas ones, they're Vietnam War area, and that, you, you, they aren't worth...
The gaskets and seals would be so dried up at this time.
Yeah, I think, I think the answer, you know, because we can't, you know, obviously give them away, is just make a little advertisement, make it known that we'll accept bids on, on, on taking...
Used to start the diesels every once in a while, didn't they?
Excuse me?
Some, somebody used to start the diesel ones every once in a while, didn't they? Up until a few years ago.
Yeah, they started from time to time, but they shouldn't be.
How many hours around those, do you know?
I don't know.
One of them looks like it's still in the crate, so, you know, uh, it does.
I mean, they've just been sitting there. I mean, if we can sell them to somebody without taking up a lot of Dave's time, but we're not going to make enough money that it's worth a lot of effort.
And I, I can, because people have asked, I can also make known that, you know, we'll take offers on the gray building, we'll take offers on the water department building. Someone told me they could pick the water department building up and drive away. It's like, well, as long as you have the permits and the insurance, I guess you could do that. But it has to be an open bid for who wants to be the highest bidder to take it away.
Yeah.
Uh, I, you know, anything that we don't, you know, except for the transfer station, that has no value. If the other things, if someone can use them, and again, has the insurance to do it safely and remove it, then we can consider that.
So, uh, financial review?
Well, basically, I think I already said that, just what we have left. Uh, to date, uh, we've spent $83,394, which includes the original 10 to Morton. So, uh, we're pretty much below, below what we projected on everything. Uh, you know, if, if I had a crystal ball, I'd say we put this whole thing to bid, transfer station and all to the contractor, but, you know, until we know that building price, uh, it's kind of a risk.
Okay, yeah.
So I'd like to do as much on our own, have that bid option so that the GC can say, "Okay, we'll finish this out for this amount of money." Uh, but we should be primed to go at it if we need to, uh, ourselves. But the original idea of seeing now, I'm not too keen on any longer.
Okay, good. Is that all on the garage?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Coal haul.
Coal haul, once again, passing environmental review with flying colors. So, uh, believe it or not, uh, it has no airborne mold or anything else in it on both levels. Uh, the mold levels are actually higher outside, so, uh, that's a good thing. It's good to have higher mold inside. Uh, we, we're going to, uh, go forward, it's kind of getting into a financial question now. But again, just to serve as clear, the plan is to put a roof, a ceiling in this room from the banisters along the crossbars and windows. It'll, uh, put in three offices behind me here, and another office over here, Sony will be here, the treasurer, bookkeeping, and myself will be moving up here to go along with, uh, the meeting room will still be here also, will be moved up somewhat. Uh, this all has to do with going back to the plans in 2009 and how to make it, uh, a more efficient building, which also recommended leaving the weight load on this floor because all these file cabinets for the listers are extremely heavy and they want them removed then. We've now added more weight to the balcony, which we need to disperse. Uh, and virtually up here now on this level, we have three part-timers working, and we have five, uh, four full-time or full-time equivalents downstairs crammed into, you know, uh, some little small areas, so... As soon as we can, we can get it together, we'll, we'll have a bid package for you. I couldn't do it for this meeting, I had intended to, but, uh, just a little bit more money would be helpful. It's not going to be a huge amount, but, uh, it just needs to be done. It will be new walls, it'll be painted, uh, it'll, it's the cheapest thing we can do to create the office space that has been lacking here for years.
So where do all the files go?
These files here will fit in the wall in the treasurer administrator's office along the windows. Some of these will be positioned in other places. Uh, as time goes by, as things are digitized, these files begin to, uh, be more archival than anything else.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what are in these files and do we need them?
Lister cards and histories of properties. Actually, kind of a valuable thing because we happen to have them. But on a day-to-day basis, it may not be totally necessary to have them all around. And as you move into, you know, all the records are digital now, they're not going to expand at the rate they have them, and, you know, we can, we can just move these downstairs for convenience for them. A few of these wider cabinets, uh, of marginal use can be put in other areas. You know, it all, it all, and it fits more than adequately for, uh, an office that's open six hours a week.
And I forgot, um, where we ended up with the ceiling? Are we going to have a ceiling?
Now, the ceiling will be a, a drop ceiling.
Drop ceiling.
The original, I asked for the original idea to, to look, uh, nicest would be to have, uh, sheet rock ceiling. The only problem is, uh, we have this second ceiling above it. And as we had, because we have an ancient slate roof, you know, it started leaking over there. Well, if we have a sheet rock ceiling, we're going to have a lot of holes in the sheet rock before long as we go looking for where the leak is. So with the, uh, the drop ceiling, we can just pop tiles off and ladder up if we need to. Uh, and we still have to, it's also going to be a little delayed, because we need a fire permit. You know, not a fire permit, but the, the permission from the Public Safety Board. And then there's other structural things that have to be done with the building. We need new windows downstairs. Uh, I think it's time to abandon the, uh, completely architecturally correct antique windows for the building. We need windows. Actually, I was standing in, in Marlene's office today and there was a downpour of breeze coming through her closed windows, you know, so it's, it's like, I think we, we need to get that moving too.
Okay.
Uh, we need crash bars on the door, there's a, you know, there's a, there's a list of things, so... We're going to start moving ahead in different areas. But, and like I said, architecturally, if the town ever comes up with the hundreds of thousands of dollars to restore this, what we're going to do up here, can be pull the nails out of the floor and the walls can be carted right out the door and we'll have this space back. But for the foreseeable future, I don't think anyone's coming up with a couple hundred thousand dollars to restore this. You know, meanwhile, it's been the town office building for, what, 50 years now, so...
Right, right. And, you know, it's got to look better than this. I was in Dover at a meeting last week on broadband connectivity, and they have an old church, which is their town hall. It's just an empty room, but, you know, it's, it's nice. It doesn't have bare lath showing through and it's got lights that work and all that nonsense. Uh, yeah, we're long overdue in this. We, we got to take a little pride in our town hall, and this is not something to be proud of.
All right, I think that's it for that one.
Okay. We're down to other business?
Nope. Don't get ahead of yourself.
No?
Other personnel policy.
That's not on here.
Did you get the last one?
It's not on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, I sent it out. Do you have another agenda that came out after this one? I have it wrong, well, I'm on...
Uh, I, I got it, I got it. Uh, no, I don't.
Yeah, because there's two things left. It's the personnel policy and the SWIP, SWIP final meeting. Yeah, after you sent me the one last Friday or Thursday, whatever day, we've gone back and forth on that, I sent you another one with these added in.
Oh, and I forgot to compare, sorry about that, yeah.
It's a solid waste implementation plan. It's the county solid waste group.
Personnel policy.
Hey, we circulated this, uh, a couple of meetings ago, we're going to take a look at. It's the VLCT model. There's this couple of things that before, uh, I think, I haven't gotten a lot of feedback other than it looks good to everybody, so if we're ready to go forward, there's just two parts, vacation leave in section 19. They have, uh, part-time, we'll accrue vacation at the same rate, uh, full-time does. Uh, just want to drop the part-time, part-time, we're going to accrue vacation. That's what our current policy is. You know, because you'd have a part-time person at this rate taking 10 of their days off, which part-time could be, you know, two months of vacation. So we'll just, uh, I'm going to eliminate that, and then overtime compensatory time off. I don't want to drop comp time completely, although I'd prefer never to use it again, but we need to always have it there. I mean, if we have a bad winter like we had in 1415, uh, and we're already quite a bit over our overtime budget, we, we might need to go to it. The standard is that an employee can accumulate 240 hours before... accumulate two hundred and forty hours before we have to go back to cash. But that's just what the standard is. We can go less than more. The idea that we would ever allow to go to two hundred and forty hours is not reasonable anyway. I mean, last time, I think we went to sixty hours, Ron, roughly?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I can't see doing any more than, than that. So, we don't really have to change that. We can just put two forty in. And we would never do that unless we were really in higher straits here. So.
And what does bereavement look like?
Bereavement, let me.
Get ahead of you.
No, that's all right, no worries. Bereavement would be provided up to three paid bereavement leave days, and that is prorated for part-timers related to a death of a close family member, domestic partner, member of an employee's household. The exact amount of time off is dependent upon the circumstances and subject to supervisor approval. A close family member is defined as spouse, civil union partner, romantic cohabitant, parent, stepparent, grandparent, child, stepchild, grandchild, sibling, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, parent-in-law, or sibling-in-law.
Okay.
I think that's just, you know, it's kind of standard, these names.
Yes, yeah.
If there's nothing else, then with those two minor changes, or the inclusion of the two forty and dropping part-time, if we can get this adopted tonight, then I'll send it to V L C T just for the last legal review, which is done for free. And that way, we have a stamp of approval from the attorneys up there that this fits. This brings it up to the changes in state law this year. Even though we've been following the state law, we need to upgrade this to be in compliance.
Is there a motion to accept the new personnel policy as circulated and including the changes that David suggested we include tonight?
So, vote.
voted by Ken?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, that new personnel policy is adopted by a vote of four to your term.
Send it up to V L C T and have them revote and they'll go back to us. And the final thing, yes, the final thing for me tonight is, we've been going through the motions of the change to the SWIP ordinance, the municipal solid waste variable rate pricing, and hauler registration ordinance. We're amending one article, which, maybe I'm wrong today. Where do I put it? It's changing the wording, allowing, dropping the requirement of the haulers to make quarterly reports to the TAM.
Directly to us.
Yeah. Which is redundant, because they require to report all this to the state. When this was originally proposed by the state, they included that in something we had to have, and subjected to by all the haulers. Frankly, I don't need the extra paperwork, because there's nothing I can do with it. They report the same thing to the state. We also get quarterly reports from TAM, because they're our, the operators of our transfer stations. So, this is totally redundant for everybody in, in the county. So, the, the SWIP, we voted on this to just eliminate this line. It's kind of just onus to all the haulers, and serves no purpose to the community. So, that's the third reading, and we will, we'll publish from there.
And the next steps are?
The next steps are, we have sixty days. Anyone who objects to the ordinance can call for a vote to have it be, to bring it to the public, to have them vote on it, or overturn this ordinance completely with this amendment, if the ordinance is already adopted. If anyone has any interest in further information on it, please contact me. It's on the website. The change is on the webpage. You can call me if, if you want to discuss it, if you want to know what to do to form a petition, to oppose the amendment, come see me. We'll guide you through the process with Marlene. But again, the only thing that's changing, and the only thing that's actually up for any petition would be just not having the haulers report to us, because it is totally redundant to what we did. There's the exact wording, just so you know what we're dropping. Haulers in facilities shall report on the quantities of municipal solid waste, organics, and mandated recyclables collected in the town for each proceeding quarter on April fifteenth, July fifteenth, October fifteenth, and January fifteenth of each year on forms to be provided by the town.
Which?
You know, I'm providing forms for them to report the same thing they report to the state, and I put it in a file calendar.
Right. And if we ever wanted it, we can get it from the state.
We can get it from the state. And they send us quarterly for our town anyway, because of our management contract. So, it's, it's all redundant.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Now, we're down to other business.
Now, we're in other business.
What do you got?
I have no other business.
You've been doing a lot of talking. Anybody else have anything?
Oh.
Okay, reviewing action items.
Executive session.
Yes, we are going to go into executive session here in a moment.
Oh, uh, oh, yes, we can.
Got one?
That was also cut from the.
Oh, so we're not going to go into executive?
I, I didn't have that, but this was, no, we don't, we don't need to have that.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to have one.
No. No, okay, good. Well, then we'll just review the action items. Dave has been looking into, I'm backing up to when Mr. Moffett was here talking about the nine-one-one address. I don't know that we ever solved that problem, but I think there's a limit to how much effort we want to put Dave through to figure out how you find a nine-one-one address for a landlocked piece of land up in the forest that nobody has a dwelling on.
Yeah. It, it's, it's a pain, granted. It's a risk not doing it. I think Shelley and I have been going back and forth on this, and with the state too. And I think what we're going to do is find somebody with an ATV, and we're just going to roll up this road and the two forks, and measure out the distances and report them to the state. I talked to, was asking Dave, man, how many, because this camp's all back up here too. We have to try and do those. I think for the protection of the town, we have to make a good faith effort to identify where these parcels are.
Okay.
Even though you are never, ever getting an ambulance up there or a fire truck.
You're not getting an ambulance up there. I mean, this is, you're essentially camping out. I mean, it's like, you know, if I'm in a tent on the long trail, if I need an ambulance, I, I can't expect them to find a nine-one-one address. They're going to have to have a lat long.
You can't get a cell service.
Or somebody's going to have to, you know, carry me.
Can I take care of it, would you?
But what, what they said, because I even said, look, you know, I have a mapping program. I can take you from Shasberry Hollow up Sleepy Hollow, and I can measure it from here to the center point of each property going up, and I can assign numbers that way. I said, because, you know, a lot of these don't have this one entrance point, so what's the driveway? Or maybe I'm over here today, you know? No, we have to designate a driveway. It's, it's, for the types of property we're talking about, it's really overkill. I thought if I could put you in the center of the property along the road, you know, fourteen-hundred-and-fifty is fourteen-hundred-and-fifty feet from Shasberry Hollow, that should get you in the, in the neighborhood, because you're still going to go, have to go find the person. But at least you'd be there.
They're in the wilderness in these places. I mean, the address doesn't matter, because even if you got an, you know, an address that was, had some rule that got you to the center of their property, you've still got to find them.
The state.
So, so what do you say? You just need like an ATV and a, and a wheel?
Just roll it up, and we'll just measure out.
I've, I've got the ATV if you've got.
Well, I mean, that's for, for Moffett's property.
No, we've got to do them all.
All of?
All, both spokes of Shasberry Hollow, Sleepy Hollow, and whatever we decide to name the other one. Because we have to name the other one. Because Sleepy Hollow is, it goes up, and I think Sleepy Hollow is the fork to the left. The other one doesn't have a name. And then we have a whole bunch over here that are like trails. It, it's, it's not thoughtful on the state's end, I must say. And other towns have told us, we don't do that. Other towns have said, oh, we've done every single one. You know, it comes down to what the guys tell me, that, you know, okay, don't, but you do so at your own risk, you know, of not making. I think if we make the good faith effort, we measure out as many as we can, lodge as many as we can with the state, and, and we've done our due diligence.
I mean, that's not the only place in town where it's likely the case, that there's a piece of land miles from the road up in the middle of nowhere.
Off of seven A, there's a whole bunch up in here.
I mean, how much, I mean, Dave can't do all this. You can't do all this with your ATV. I mean, to, to do this is, is a, a big expensive effort, if we're going to try to find every piece of land that's way up the side of the mountain and create a, a way to access the center of it.
I think the way I was going to start was addressing each person who has camps up there, and tell them on this date, we are going to go up and measure where your entrance is. If you don't mark your entrance with this red tape or something, we will pick one of your driveways as the entrance, and we'll measure to that, and we'll send those addresses to the state. And the board will adopt road names for whatever fork, the right fork off Sleepy Hollow, we'll have to call that something. And I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to justify the rationale for this, because the road's never going to be marked. And then you're going to get to the fork in the road, and you're going to have to know that this is going up that way. When you get up past the fork, it's kind of narrow. But they actually take people from the mountains all the time, so.
I don't think, you know, we could go through this and spend a lot of money figuring, doing this. And I don't think we're going to make anybody who breaks a leg on the side of a mountain any safer.
Oh, we won't. But what we will do is protect the town when that person breaks their leg, and they have a nine-one-one address, because the state says we have to have one. If we don't have one, they can turn around and say that, oh, well, you know, it took a long time for us to get there, because we didn't know where you were.
Yeah.
I understand both sides of this, believe me. And I'm just looking at, at the most protective way to address the needs of the town.
Yeah, but any one road, Dave, you could go up and have one road. You could have a half a dozen.
It's like having.
Roads to go off of it.
If you have a private road and you have forks off it, go, go, go look at Furnace Brook.
Yeah.
Yeah, Furnace Brook. You know, it goes into like a cross.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of numbers in there. So.
It's, it's nerves like that.
Well, that's, that's most of them, though.
As far as the homeowner's responsibility or property owner's responsibility, aren't they accountable for that, as far as like providing that information?
And you, you get over Shasberry Hollow, you want to have a brick with you on the cell phone.
It's a town's responsibility to, to assign nine-one-one numbers.
And, and the ones that we have were assigned by the town?
Yes. And that's why we periodically do corrections on nine-one-ones, because you go out and you're looking at something, and you know it's not eighteen-hundred feet from the corner. There's a formula. You measure it out, and then there's a little formula that generates the number. But, you know, it, it, I mean, it clearly has its benefits. This is just an oddity, which I wouldn't agree with, that basically camps up ATV tracks need AT, nine-one-one numbers, but the state disagrees. They say that if it's this road, and we've sent them the maps, we've sent them pictures, and one, he sent back circle, he goes, well, that's a camp. What's this over here? You know, if you zoom in with the satellite photography, you're like, okay, yeah. But you see this squiggly line, and this squiggly line, and this squiggly, so which one is the entrance? That's why I just wanted to plop it right in the middle. But, you know, I think, like, the two, the forks on the hollow, there's our, what is it called, Sleepy Hollow or whatever it's called. I mean, I don't think that would take too long to measure out. I mean, the ones over here could take longer, and I don't even know how we would do those, because there's no road there.
Yeah. Well, I, it's.
I make a motion, we do it after the garage is built.
Yeah.
I, I think if we just show good faith that we're going to do it, we just got too many things on our plate where it's a lot to do that.
Well, I was, I was going to suggest we, we try to fix Mr. Moffett's, because he brought it to our attention. But as far as going out and trying to figure out how to do every one of these in town.
Not right now.
I'm not ready to bite that off.
Not right now.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it is, it is kind of a difficult question. I thought, like I said, I thought just measuring to the center of the property along the roadway, I'm still not convinced that that is the best way just to put it in the ballpark.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, definitely, because I'm Mr. Moffett, and he was responsible.
Okay, so, okay, well, that, that's there. Okay, so that, that, that's actually already on there. So.
Yeah.
That was how to do it, and now we're, you, you think you have a, an idea of how to give him a correct nine-one-one address?
Uh, yeah. We, we can do something with that.
Yeah. I mean, you know, ask him, he seemed to have a good idea about what it ought to be, and that it was wrong. So, you know, if he wants to put it at twenty-three oh four, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be exact, though. The system will reject it. That's how we wound up with this number, I'm sure. But we'll, 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 we'll take care of that.
Okay.
As a smaller part of the project, we'll take care of that.
I'm, I'm giving you the action and to figure out what his nine-one-one address is.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Take care of that.
All right. Back at the special meeting, we had several items that were, came up for Goldstone and Company to do, the bid schedule, we've got that, we talked about that. We defined responsibility in the bid instructions. Finding access to construction, you're still working on that?
No, we did that. What I required them to do was they can have access seven to seven Monday through Saturday at all times. There has to be a twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot ride away from North Road to the transfer station. At no time, the, the area's going to have to be clearly delineated between the construction site and the cap. And at no time is any material or any personnel or anyone from the construction company to cross that line. No one is going to go near the cap. No one is to store anything temporarily on the cap.
Yeah.
The transfer station will be gated and locked. Nothing from the construction is ever to be put in the, in the transfer station area, because we have a permit for that. And the gate always has to be accessible, and always, always locked. So, I made a few lists of rules that have to be followed for them.
Okay. And that was worked out with the, the crew, some of that? Because the next item is, Jason.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
To the crew about the construction schedule. And then you indicated that Merrill has reviewed our, our document. There's still a little bit of back and forth going on.
Yeah, that, that will be finalized probably until close to December.
On our October second meeting, Joe, I think it was you the one that asked a question about how many calls from two Bennington Rescue Squad are for drug overdoses.
Yeah.
Dave and I have both pinged on Forest about that. We haven't heard anything back, and I have a feeling that those numbers are not easily available. Are you, are you hard over that, or?
Oh, I'd, I'd like to know how many calls he makes in Shasberry. He can give us that.
That, that we can do?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, my, yeah, I was under the impression that he, he was getting quite a few of them. And that's, and then I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. In fact, I think those numbers were in that document that he.
I don't remember.
At PowerPoint. Okay. I'll, I'll take an item to check that PowerPoint and see.
I think what I'd like to, I think he gave us the total calls, but, but I would like the breakdown of how, what are transferable, and what are, what they go away without any, without any trans, without any transportation.
Okay. Well, I know he's got those numbers in general, but you want to know specifically for Shasberry?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Response and transport.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's a lot of response without transport.
So, what, what fraction of the, how many calls in Shasberry, and what fraction of those are transf, transporting?
Or ones that he gets paid for.
And which ones he doesn't get paid for.
And, and a little detail to that, too, because he's claiming the, the loss because of it not being compensated. How many are A O S response and transport? How many are B O S transports? Because there's a different cost structure for both. And this is all being driven by, because there's not being returned, getting the proper return to the type of unit. So, are A O S units on B O S calls, because that's what's available? Or are B O S units taking A O S calls, because the A O S unit is on transport to Albany? I mean, there's, there's many questions involved with this. But it would be interesting to see what they were called for. Is it an A O S category call or a B O S category call, and what type of unit responded to it, and was there a transport?
Okay. And I just realized, I should probably make that assignment for Tony, because he's on the board. He has.
Yeah.
He's the one that should be interacting with him here.
But as far as the, you know, drug overdose thing goes, that was just my own curiosity and also probably maybe something that the citizens might have to, like, you know? But the answer I was really looking for was none. You know, we don't have that, so...
Okay.
I would like to, I would like to believe we don't.[1718.18]